People that we find acceptable, but I'd hate to get there because anybody licensed bonded and insured is... Should be okay.
Yeah.
Kim, back to you. Is that something that maybe you want to get that letter that Wood got to hook up and put in, wherever it's appropriate, the portion of lien and let's read it before it goes out to see what it says?
I mean, I...
Clarification might not hurt, but at the same time, when you go in to apply for your building permit, you get all that pretty much ironed out and explained to you.
Well, I'd agree. Just being from what David said, just to have it, I mean, it's just a secondary safe, not necessarily safety, just another option to let the residents know that these are things that could happen if X happened.
Well, we probably ought to include that with the will serve letter at that point, so that's even before the permit process will make up.
And that might be appropriate, but I don't put it in, absolutely.
With the will serve, so they're totally aware of that right off the top before they even decide to start in the permitting phase.
And I didn't bring a will serve letter, and he didn't mention it, but I assume he probably went to have the very first document, whatever we're presenting to the resident, that's...
Yeah, because we won't accept a building permit until they have a will serve one.
Right.
So...
I would agree with what I was about to say. It would be the deal for that.
That would be a great person that was, here's your will serve letter, and here's the money that's going to come with, we will serve as long as you're okay with these conditions, and I would say just the application for service too. Here's the fees, and then here's the form that you're going to need to sign. And if any of that bothers you, you don't have a will serve.
At least that puts us into a consistent program from this point forward, or whenever that gets done forward to...
And the mortgage company's going to want to see that too.
Well, I can, I mean, I think we can do more on the building permit of having, you know, a form that goes with the, you know, when somebody comes in, here, you know, you're going to need a, okay, here's the process, you need to get a will serve letter, here's all the fees, and here's the whole process, so that we're more transparent. Because, to be fair, I mean, they come in, they ask questions, and I give them the best answer, you know, the whole picture, but, you know, good day, bad day, in a hurry, have more time, I can't say that it's been perfectly consistent every time. But if we had a form, and I said, here it is, and then they've read the exact same form, it would be a lot more consistent. It would be an improvement.
Two different areas, way, two different things to be able to start with.
So who issues the will serve letter right now? Is that GEA? Who's issuing the will serve letter?
The mayor and the...
I signed it.
I think you're the only one that signed it. I was going to say Anne Gary, but I think it's just you.
Fix that, would you, ma'am?
How do I do so? I signed them, I just did, so I'll live to preserve them.
So this year, it's been Lynn and Chip, and then there's all been a discussion with Gary and I about making sure that we haven't offered to provide service somewhere we can't.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Might be a real bargain for somebody. Yeah, three miles up the road.
So anyways, my understanding of the process now is that Lynn is consulting with Gary and I, and then Lynn and Chip are taking care of the will serve letter.
And then the other question I had is, any accounting end of it? How does Lynn know that he didn't take the money and run with it?
The $6,000?
The $19,000.
The $19,000?
He'll be here.
He can be at it, it's not that.
Kathy Jo, Kathy Jo has no record of anybody paying her any money, and she rents the water billings. Is it necessary for her to know this stuff?
So, we track that knowing in our permits.
Okay.
It's a line item on the building permit fee skin.
So it's always tracked.
And it's collected at the time of all the other...
But it's a great way. A great way. So, just for clarification, Kim, on, prior to the town owning the water, they got that water right, but they allowed them to continue to use that water. So they allowed the owner to continue to use that water. So as that, as that process worked out, it just kind of went right back to that.
For the record, we track and fill all the impact fees separately.
You're the guy picking that one up.
Wanted to make sure when somebody reuse this tape that they don't think that we're bucketing impact fees in some other fund. You know, like you said, there's a line item on the building, you know, they write it as one check, but there's a line item on the building fee that says, this is your water impact fee, this is the transportation impact fee, this is, these are all your fees, and here's where all the money goes, and then when Lynn gets the big check...
I get a copy of the building application and how much is due at the same time as they give me the check. So Kathy Jo really doesn't need to know that the impact fee is paid because it's in the permitting process and not water billing per thing.
Just an outside...
Okay. Senator Daniel Nissipole, Dana, I think Ryan, have you any questions to add? So are we okay?
I still want to discuss the letter that was supposed to go out last month.
Do you want to discuss it?
On Stormhaven.
Okay, is that coming out?
It's next. Okay, I'm just going to close out this one, the Star Stormhaven. Do you want him to stay there? Might be scared around.
No, sit down. You work too much.
I'm going to sneak out.
Okay, so we will move on to item number eight, which is Daniel Nissipole, yeah, Daniel Nissipole, excuse me, nine, Stormhaven Matters, if any, which apparently there is.
Lynn, was that letter approved to go out?
It was.
But it did not go out?
But it was approved to go over the mayor and water manager's signatures, and the water manager refused to sign it as written.
Okay, and by the way, Mr. Walton called me tonight and said he had to work, or he was planning to come.
He was going to come.
So I should mention it. And the issue of why Gary didn't want to sign that is confusing to me. What he's saying is, is if someone pays $5,000 for a hookup, and then they don't want to, they don't use the water, you should give them that money back.
Kim, not to interrupt, not that they don't use the water, they have an unpaid amount. And so you're, you're saying that you're going to disconnect, you're going to shut off their water and pull their meter.
The April and October, whatever, that version, they're behind, and that comes up, or...
So Gary, what he told me was, and I don't know if you've talked to him on this issue, so if I say something differently, tell me, that he said, if a person owed $1,000 and weren't paying on it, then $35 a month accrues each month, they're not using the water, but that continues because they have a meter. And so the, the amount keeps building, but if they, he said, if they owe $1,000, and you go in there and pull their meter that they paid $5,000 for, you owe them the difference, because you've taken back something that they bought. That now it's yours and not his anymore, but he bought it, and...
I think he paid for part of the service, which included that, it would be the way I look at it, I mean, that's a part of the whole...
We need to make the meter a fee.
Is that your understanding of what he was saying?
They never buy the meter. They buy access to the water system. That meter is never theirs. That meter is always...
We service it, we take care of it.
That meter is...
He said that's how the water company has always operated from day one, and so he didn't want to sign the letter saying it would cost them... He said, I don't know how you can put a figure on it, $11,000 to $15,000 for them to re-hook up, provided the water is available, as you mentioned, with the moratorium, because you don't know what it's going to be.
Let me ask you a question. If the meter goes bad, who pays to replace it?
Town.
Does the town pay it?
That's why we don't allow them to deal with it.
It's like Mountain Fuel. If they come to my house and they, they spend $3,000 to the gas line and the meter, and then all of a sudden, I'm not using the gas, I'm not going to get that money refunded.
No.
Well, it's a right to the water.
And see, here's, here's the problem in this particular lot. This is where I'm getting back in my...
Is this letter for this particular lot that we're talking about?
Yeah, and this is where I'm getting back to my private individual, Miss... Can't think of her name.
Little trouble here.
Goodfellow.
Yes.
Miss Goodfellow. I called her up, and I said, what's going on in this lot? And she said, oh, oh, that lot had a trailer house on. This, a, not a double trailer, but a single, had a trailer on it. And she said, it was hooked up to the sewer too. I said, okay, that's good to know. What, what do you think they paid for a hookup? And she says, well, I can't remember. My dad, when he first started this, was charging $200 for a hookup. Now, I, I'm charging $3,000 for a hookup, or I was, before you guys took the system off. I said, well, what would be your estimate, best estimate that that particular lot and that homeowner at that time paid for a hookup? And she said, I have no idea. So if we're going to refund the guy some money, how much are we going to refund him? I mean, to me, it's nonsense to refund the money anyway, but there's always two sides to every story. But there's another problem that comes up on this particular lot. And then my other question is, is why hasn't he been paying the sewer fee then, too?
So this is a vacant lot at this point?
It is.
And this is where a lien would need to go?
Well, ever since the town has taken the hydrant over and the water, we have not received one payment from them.
But he does have a meter to service the lot, or the owner has a...
The meter is now turned off. It got turned off six months ago. So the problem is, is here's these three years of bills, which is $1,100, and, you know, I don't want to pay it, but that's fine, okay, we, we don't, if you don't want to pay it, fine. But you have to understand that if we come back and you want a hookup, it's going to be $19,000.
So maybe you're paying...
But the water manager doesn't want to sign the letter because he, he just, this, this hookup fee and stuff, you know, he thinks there's some refund that should come in, and maybe it's right. You tell me.
I'll tell you, if you give me that letter, I'll call Gary and go investigate. And if the council has another direction they'd like to move on this?
Well, is this the per se? Until there's not, nothing there right now, no...
There is a hydrant up on the hill, but it won't produce water because the water's turned off. Prior to three years ago, it did produce water.
Prior to three, but they've had animals on the property, right? Have they been using water to farm?
I think they've used the neighbor's water.
But another consideration here is his property is for sale, is it not?
So if there's a lien on it, then it has to be...
Yeah, see, this is one of those where you should have a lien, and if that's the case, or it gets sold out of the market.
You lien the property and then you...
And then what do you, what, what do you tell our new homeowner? You know, first of all, you can't have any water because of the moratorium. And secondly, you can't hook up the sewer.
So then he can't sell his property.
No, he can.
Oh, yeah, he can sell it.
He's got the money. He's left town. There's a new buyer that's sitting there saying, why?
I get this every day. Every day, somebody bought property, and then they'll tell them a lot to get the property sold.
When you tell them, you've got to have five acres on the corporate side.
But we're, the town of Daniel is not going to allow a new sewer hookup on that system. We've got enough problems with that, with those 19 years. So if he, if he sold the property, and once again, may I emphasize, we're not, I'm not trying to make law here or push anybody out of town. I, I'm just simply trying to clarify the existing situations.
I do understand, one of the positives is we did get something taken care of off a hydrant that's been used off a meter and things, and that didn't get fully solved? Yes?
No, not in the funding yet, ma'am.
The individual that had a hydrant that wasn't, that was taking water past the meter, or it wasn't, it wouldn't have been metered.
That didn't, that got dug up last week, and it's taken care of.
So I'm really interested, Ryan, just to see if you can even see a difference in water. Could you?
Kim and I have, on, on that system, it's hard, it's going to take a few months, because Kim and I have talked, and we're reading the master meter monthly now, but we read the other system every five minutes. It doesn't take long to get a trend here, it's going to take a few months to get the...
I mean, you know, whether it's two months, three months, we'll find out that, hey, we'd probably say 100 gallons, 1,000 gallons, whatever. I mean, it might, who knows if it would be new?
It could be next spring, with irrigation season being over, maybe next spring before we know it.
How long has this lot been made here?
Now, for, I can only say for the time I've been working around the last three years.
Three years. We have, we have some different regulations, different from what the standard town is in a, in a legally divided subdivision. So the recorded subdivision, it has a different set of rules than the standard in the town one year. So, because I'm unclear on that, I won't quote you how long it is, but it may not be a building of law at this point.
And you're saying, since it's a lack of use over the year, individual versus subdivision?
Right, yeah, there's, there are some differences of a recorded subdivision versus a normal RA5, so...
Now, you do have the records from Miss Goodfellow, and you could get into those records and go back far enough on that lot to where you found when the sewer was engaged, when the water was engaged. It'll tell you most likely when the trailer was removed.
I would probably be more interested in, in what kind of a contract they signed with Mrs. Goodfellow, what that contract states, rather than not willing based on... Here's your hookup, and it's good for forever?
In those files, I have not seen any contract. I don't know what that's going to say or not.
And if there was one, though, I mean, once we took over, you know, the whole dynamic's changed.
Well, no, because we took the debt too. And so legally binding, I think they may have some, some recourse on that, so that's why, that's why I mentioned that. Because I know that prior to the town taking over the water system, there have been some, there were some hookups that have been sold, payments being made. We accepted the debt with it. But as far as the build of the lot, that will be, that'll be different than the survey.
You know, we, we could most likely, or possibly provide water to that lot, but I don't see how we could ever provide sewer. So now it becomes a non-built-for lot.
They can't do a septic?
They, they might be able to do a septic, or, or there's other alternatives.
Isn't it running for the grain field?
Well, they have alternative systems too that don't require a rain field.
I would say that they'd have to work that out with the county. For the right amount of money, you can do some pretty amazing things.
Well, I, I guess really what, what we're really trying to do is, do we ever send a letter out, or do we make the changes to it? What's, what do we do? Do we go lien the property?
Do we, do we have a spot to send that?
It's very possible that this owner, once he reads this letter,
It will move.
He will say, here's $1,100, and I'm sorry I caused any problems.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot of times typical.
But I haven't seen a letter go out yet.
Well, it hasn't been.
And, and so Gary just doesn't want to send that out?
He doesn't want to sign it.
He doesn't want to sign?
He, he's on this, where you return the money.
Okay.
We don't know how much he returned.
I'll tell you an answer from this...
This is easy. Let's just have the mayor sign it and send the letter?
It's already signed. I mean, just a blank signature on it.
I think that's okay.
Legally, I don't think there's certainly any issue about it.
Ryan, have you ever seen the letter?
I'm sure I have, I don't remember it. Well, I imagine...
You guys want to review the letter before you send it out?
Well, it was harsh. There's no doubt about it. It was harsh, but that's what...
In fact, the council made some changes to that letter.
That's right. It was intended to be harsh. They're behind. Yeah, I think, I think the, the changes we made on there was fine. I think we sent the letter.
We've got a lot of discussion on it.
If we can get a response, that's what we're trying to get.
But, but it wouldn't cost him $19,000, right? Because he's already got a lot of it installed in there, you just got to go turn it on.
Well, it's still, if he's, if he's off the system, he's going to be buying back into that system. His hookup will go away.
But has he already given the one water share? Has he already paid to have stuff installed?
I don't know in the, in the Goodfellow, but even if that's installed, if that thing is gone, and they won't pay their $35, he forfeits that right. His $35 a month, keep that right there. And if, if he's not willing to pay that, then that hookup goes away. He would still pay the $19,000, but he wouldn't incur any cost plus cost.
So I thought the $19,000 included plus cost?
It kind of did.
No?
It did, yes. The $19,000 includes the cost, so it's fifteen...
Oh, from $10,000, I'm sorry.
Well, it's the $10,000 plus the water share, so it's fifteen, which is not nineteen, but it's basically the same, just got, you know, 1,300 or 1,900, it's decisions the same.
Yeah, but that might be important to him.
You'd be right. It's, it's 15,000 or 1,300, but not 19, but...
We explain that to him in, in that letter, and it says for you to re-hook up to this system if the moratorium's off.
Okay, then I'd be able to hook on. I have water.
If, if you hook, if you want to hook back into the system, it would be between 14...
What you have in your letter is 11 to 15,000, so do you want to change that figure?
I think we better.
Well, the impact fee is 11, so that would be the minimum. He's already paid, I mean, there's no connection process, because the hardware's physically there, right, for the water? So we're just talking about plus the irrigation share, so 11 to 15 would be whether or not he has an irrigation share.
All right, I will...
Did we talk about one signature line and...
We, we really do have people on another system that aren't taking any water, but they're paying that $35.
Oh, absolutely.
And the meters, the can's there, but they just haven't hooked on, but they're reserving that right.
Yeah, or they use it a teeny bit, or they...
Well, some of them aren't even hooked on. I mean, they're physically not hooked on to that, but... He was explaining that, when the can goes in, you're getting a bill. And so, and as long as they're paying that, that reserves their right to hook in.
There was three or four hookups sold on Little Sweden before this increase took place. There were three individuals that say, okay, here's my $5,000.
Yeah, they hurried up and did it.
And they're supposed to be on record. Are they on record?
Yes.
Okay.
I am sure there's a couple that aren't on record today.
There's two, maybe three.
Yes.
But the, the other side of that is, let's say someone buys a, a nice lot, and it's, it's buildable and everything, and it has a meter on it. But they haven't built their house yet, and they haven't hooked on to it. And the water company, you know, you've sold the property, so the title company says, well, we've got this water meter, we need to send $35 a month, and they don't build a house for 10 years. But they still send that money every month, and they pay that $35. And it only makes sense to the people building the house, because that was cheaper than drilling a well. They're getting the well permit, maybe the well permit wasn't available, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
For all the folks who know about Timberlake, whether you have a house up there or not, you're on a road that's got water service available, you're paying your $76 of what your bond, and you're paying your $35 possible hookup fee every month, regardless of the house up there or not, they've been doing it for you ever.
And if you don't pay that $76 a month, do you get the money back?
No, they'll lien my, they'll lien the property.
Yeah, they're getting their money back. So when, when John Waters subdivision, when they subdivided his, I was up digging on the water line, just up east of that, when the developer came and wanted to subdivide that section that John's house is on. He drove right up there, he wrote it, he wrote Darwin and Boots a check. He was more than excited to get that thing buttoned down, down to those lots, because he knew how much of a well it would be, and it was a good deal, and so that's why there's a vow there. They only ran it two-year lot, and it stopped, and then later on, they ran it all down. Forget it's made, but, I mean, they, they know how good of a deal it is compared to what it was then. But I, we tried to do that. We tried to tell everybody it was going to go up, because we sell water. That's what the town's doing, we own water system. And the hookups we get, faster we pay back the bonus, or replace bike, or whatever. Yeah, we have some that was sold prior to the town taking over, but it will be interesting as we weave through those.
Well, if we have an old record of it, we can't legally honor it.
Well, it depends on what the record is.
Okay, I don't think...
How many memories can we...
We won't cover that. Somebody might have a council check they've saved over the years that says exactly what it is on it.
We'll have a log record, and we'll have all that information on it.
So I'll prepare this letter over your signature. Do you want it to go certified with JRC?
Do we have an address where they're at?
Yes. Gary said he knows he's there, so...
Yeah, let's send it out and see if we can get a response. All we really want to do is pay the bill.
Okay, so that takes care of Stormhaven.
Ryan, did you want to talk about the corrective action plan?
Me did. I think it's fairly straightforward, so the state has asked us to sign what they call a corrective action plan for the deficiencies. So a little background, we had multiple positive IP tests in a year, and we got them to largely attribute that to the sampling methods, which I think is a good thing. And then to do that before we pulled the two-foot string of something out of the meter. So climbing on that was fortunate or unfortunate, so hopefully we've disinfected and things will be better now. Nonetheless, we got a, because they came up, they did an audit, they found all sorts of wonderful things that we knew. One of them is, you'll remember when we got rid of that little pump house that was a disaster, and we put in a fitless adapter, we didn't put betonite around the well in that upper five feet, because it used to be open and full of water, and we were trying to keep costs down. And so they decided to assess us 200 points for that, for operating, without operating permit, and then we have all our other points. And so because we're over 145 points, to keep the EPA happy, we have to sign what they call a corrective action plan. And so they'd asked us to take the necessary steps to get that operating permit by June, July of 2018. And I guess before we...
How many extensions do we get?
We already have it.
You mean, within a week up to that date, can we find that extension real quick?
You can always ask if there's problems. I, I think that July 2018 is, is pretty reasonable, and they managed to leave all the other notes out of the, all the other things that were found in the audit are not part of the corrective action plan, so...
So you're happy with the...
They still want us to fix that. I, I think it's something we can sign, but that's, that's kind of your decision. So my recommendation is that we accept it, with the 2018 date, the July 2018 date.
Do you want to go to the correction?
We're going to have to dig down. Kim and I have already done it twice, and Casey said he would do it this time. We're going to have to dig down around the well about five feet, and then backfill the area around the well with betonite chips.
With what?
It's betonite.
Like what?
Like a cement.
Oh, okay.
So the water can't get down in the annulus.
Will that shave the 200, will that shave 200 off?
Yes.
Just that betonite?
That betonite alone will allow us to apply for an operating permit, and that will take care of this corrective action plan. The other issues will still be issues.
And the rough, you know, cost on that betonite, I mean, $1,000, $2,000?
The betonite will be $100,000. The labor to do it is more unless it's volunteered again, and then that won't count.
Major undertaking anyway, so...
So no, it's not a major, it's not a major undertaking unless, I mean, if we try to hire a contractor to do it, I'm sure it will be thousands, but if we do it ourselves, it's not that bad. It's just getting the right people, they're the right thing to do it.
Be a big deal of months.
July should give us a few months on the other side too.
Has the council seen this letter?
I know Chip and Eric have. We've talked about it.
So did we find an operating permit? Had been issued or has not?
To our knowledge, there has never been an operating permit.
Well, hi, Kim. Before it was ours, who overs, who overseeded that particular section of the... So if they've never been on that, if they've never been on that service before we took it, who would be the one responsible besides Suzie?
Well, it would be the division of drinking water. So what, what they're saying is that we needed, that when we made changes to the well, we needed to reapply for an operating permit? And because we didn't do the betonite, they won't issue it. So they're willing to issue what they call temporary operating permits since we did the betonite because that will restore it to the condition it was in before we improved it. And so all, they're not asking us to approve, to approve all the other debt deficiencies that it was originally approved with. They're just saying, well, we made it worse by not doing betonite, which...
It's a lot better this could have been from our discussions.
So I think, all in all, I think it's fairly reasonable and I would recommend we go ahead and sign it and get that done before, you know, either next week or early spring.
With that being said, until taking a motion, I'm getting that done.
How long do we, how long before they want a response from us?
Now?
Now?
They were emailing me earlier today and in fact, she just emailed me right now saying, oh, I look forward to your email with what you discussed tonight.
Rachel?
Um, it was Jennifer. But I just got a response like ten minutes ago saying, thank you for getting back to me.
What state agency ever is on top of something and an issue? That's amazing.
So the answer is they wanted us to bring it up last month and address it and we didn't. So we'd like us to get that back.
I've seen it, but he did tell me that after.
I sent it back, it was twenty-two minutes ago.
Remove that we accept Ryan's recommendations. State.
First, a recommendation to betonite the well and get our points back under control. Do you have a second?
Jim?
Do you have a second? Do you have any discussion?
Yeah. As we see this, are met with no further violations or deficiency or assessed? If we get one more, is that a violation if we get one more bad back T or back T?
No, so the, if we got one more bad back T and didn't do anything about it, that would be a violation. So the violation isn't a bad back T. The violation is not doing anything about it when we get it. So if we get a bad back T, we'll have to go through the right process and then on down the line too. If that becomes a boil order, then we'll have to do that.
But it says violations or deficiencies.
My understanding is that a bad back T is not a violation or deficiency as long as you're proactive and go through the right process. The violation is when you get a bad back T and say, well, I don't really care.
Then you set the points.
Then all of a sudden, you know, when you get a positive back T, especially with the call form, and then you say, I don't really think that's an issue. I'm not doing anything about it. You can, you'll be hearing from them shortly.
Okay.
You don't really deal with someone like that.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? None? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, that's fine.
We signed that.
That's a point given. Do you want to sign and give it to you? Do you want to sign it now and give it to Ryan?
Not necessarily. That would be great if you could do that. Then, I mean, I don't know. Water systems change hats all the time, so...
Okay.
Just like when businesses do it, sign lots of contracts and then sell it, right?
True.
Okay, anything else on Stormhaven? Not unwound it. Out of number ten. Which would be planning department report violations and enforcement.
Okay.
Mr. Eric.
Okay, we're up. So this is the planning report. Do you need one, Kim?
I'll take one, sure.
You may help?
We'll take hold on the back rope, there's an extra.
Okay. There's a few extra?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ryan? I'm gonna share with you.
What, that's what we normally do. He takes all the most and then he gets it to me.
Can't you do that?
Sometimes I have to be just like a drizzle.
Okay. Any questions on that? Couple of things I'll hit. Epic billing questions. I met with Epic Engineering, Corey Walker, on the thirteenth as we've tried to get through some of his billings and look for documentation on the billing that they're sending. So we're working forward on that. Any other questions on... The three farm subdivision, I'm getting worried about that. We have houses that are gonna be getting close to COs and the road's not complete.
And that would be up to them, correct?
Yeah, it's their road, private road and...
And they won't get a CO until it's done, right?
That's correct. Well, they can bond, I guess, but...
Cut through, I'll track a little bit and say, the end of three thousand, they've been doing the, called it where that water meter was. We had a big discussion where they did a little half-round driveway to go around. So they're doing the landscaping now, around that. Wasn't that supposed to be moved before they did any of that?
No, we didn't want it in the driveway. We, as long as they went around it, that was the point.
Okay, that was the whole purpose of it.
That was the whole plan. Don't get in the driveway because if you look at the garage door, it's right behind it. And that's what we thought the driveway is naturally gonna, and so that was the option. Move it or put it in the round driveway. And then, of course, you'll remember that that came back and in their plan said it was a hard surface driveway. And so we held onto that. It had to be hard surface. And they didn't want to do it, so they posted a bomb with the town. But they did get the cement and in time that we let that one expire. So, yeah, they did everything that we required of them on the end of three thousand.
Still a lot of blue stakes going on this, lately, yeah?
There's a lot going on. And matter of fact, there's a lot going up in the Stormhaven area right now. There's a lot going on up in that area. Quite a deal, yes. Which scares me because we don't have accurate data where the lines are.
Is there any, any way from all your blue stakes to get little increments of data?
Well, the blue stake's there, but I, there's nothing for me to hook the machine on. It's a guess when I'm out there. You know, when we walked it with her, about right there. Well, it turns out it's about seven feet that way.
Right. So how, I mean, Dr. Prologis, you know, but how do you, how...
What I do, and I just did this today, I just got the email back from the owner, Jerry, I forget his last name, doesn't matter. He wants to put a cut into the water line, put a tap in. And I'm like, where are you digging? Because if you're digging in your frontage, I need personnel on site while you're digging. And he wrote back, I'm not digging in the frontage. I'll be digging between my meter and the house and installing a tap out for the horses or grates on your side of the meter. Having walls help me. But if they're getting up close to our line, I mean, that's the only way we got to know is if somebody digs it up and we see it. The guys are, they're like, there it is. But where she tells us it comes down and tips onto that road is, it actually shows on all the maps that we've got back about seven feet clear into those front yards. I mean, we're fifteen feet into the front yard. We're not out by the road at all. So there fences out by the road and it's clearly inside of that. And so I have to really be careful up there. And like I say, I can't be exact on that because we just don't know. We don't know where those lines are without spending money to pawl.
Maybe somebody aware of the work on sticks?
So that's pretty tough.
Couple more.
People taking, I'm sure we'll get more information.
Yes. Tiny house code, what are you getting checked out for that?
We're getting, I've had, I've had like three of them. One of them came through Lynn. She referred somebody to me on tiny homes. That there's a need and a component of that was the affordable housing that was brought up earlier. They want to put in tiny homes and they want an area in our town that they can do that. They understand that we're RE5. They want to know if they can do an overlay zone where maybe this would be appropriate. So I've had four, probably five inquiries into that. It's a big thing now, the tiny house thing, so...
A moment, anyway.
Right? And I tell them with the current administration the town has, it's highly unlikely. But it's on there because those are questions I'm getting filled with.
In my business, I get hit up a little bit for that kind of stuff. Ran over and they, multiple people explain to me that nobody's letting them in the door. You know, there's a few places, I don't know where, but most places will not touch them with a temper.
Oh, it's all Lake County is now opening it up. All is all they...
Out by daybreak, somebody said they were gonna do a tiny home.
Tiny home.
And any residential, a lot of the sewer and everything else?
People are upset. They suddenly got, in this neighborhood, all these houses, and they're gonna pop this thing right between us.
And I take that back. If you have a lot and you're gonna intercept it, yes. But as far as hooking up in the backyard and all these side those places, that's where it's just, I mean, it's gotta be either presented.
With a five acre, on five acres, right? You have a tiny home, it's always got five acres.
Well, our code states one residential unit, so you can either have a house or... We don't specify how big your house is.
We already accommodate that. But as far as accommodating a small house, they can actually do that.
No, and I tell them now with the current administration, highly unlikely, but it certainly applies. It's their right to apply and so we allow that. You got something?
Do you, like a fifth wheel? Somebody pulls a fifth wheel in, they have to have five acres to park it?
Well, we have a camping stay limit in the town.
No, I mean, like a tiny home, that could be considered a tiny home.
A camp, no.
So as a fourteen day limit, it needs to be on the foundation.
So are, if they've had five acres and wanted to put a tiny home, it'd have to be on a foundation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think that's where with the tiny homes, that's where that comes in is most of your tiny homes are on a triple asset trade.
They're leaving midnight or they're going to be by any time.
What's that?
Or smaller.
Or smaller.
And I mean, the regulation on that one, who are you gonna go after? As far as the town, you're gonna have to go after the property owner. Because in the middle of the night, they're gone.
Tiny homes are blue on.
Yeah. They wormed up the truck and the house followed them up.
And I got one on here with regards to the corner on three thousand and Daniels. And we've had a couple of letters, maybe five of those folks, or at least a letter at this point. We had one on Friday, so hours, months ago on a build and then we, where do we stand on that? On the second tree that was being built on and just hard to park down that...
We don't, we can't figure out when that was established. So as far back as we can go, and Ryan's done...
But about the new building, expansion, that wouldn't be considered an expansion or a use by building onto the trailer?
Well, we don't know. Because we don't know what, there's nothing that the county says what it was, when it was approved, what it was approved as, there's no record of it.
And so...
Sorry, they sent it to you this morning, but we do have some information on that.
Just get them.
It doesn't change everything. It did the whole lot of what you said. We did find a little bit about being, you know, basically it was, it was approved in its current state. Whether it was legal or not, I think is open to interpretation, but...
And then I was bringing up some other, as far as then the news with all the stuff going on. If everything was legal as far as trailers and things and inappropriate, then we have such a, you know, the cars and the oils and the engines and then, you know, fifteen of them out in front of things. And so is that gonna be to where the neighbors, I mean, they've been there so long, they really don't believe, and a lot's gonna be done over the back that they can do whatever they want. And I believe there's some parameter on that property that just not, everything can be approved, so...
Right, right. And so, and we still have the nuisance law that we can certainly apply there. Even if everything there is legal, we have a nuisance law and some other street parking regulations.
Well, the mechanic out on the street with the jacks underneath it on a daily basis without parking, parking where they haven't left yet for a month now and those kind of things.
Yeah. And then, and like I say, I've stopped there, they've been good. And, you know, you would see a car on the jack, well, that's a safety issue. Come on, you gotta fix that right now. And so they fixed it and put that on the wall, get the jack out from underneath, so... I mean, they know something's coming, but the safety issue, we have to deal with right now. They're too many kids there.
And I know there's some stuff that we probably need to chew on before we can really make a, give a decision about that that just came out, so...
And it will be a nice, once I get it from sweet.
It took us a while, but we managed to find some stuff from eighty's. But it wasn't easy, it wasn't easy to uncover.
See, and prior to seventy-two, there wasn't a zoning, so...
They were built in nineteen seventy-three and there are already one, when they were first built.
So seventy-three, because they brought it in in seventy-two, so...
Okay, I'm picking.
July fifth, nineteen seventy-three?
Right after the fourth of July.
Bang!
Okay?
An update on the ranch drive lot. He's removed all of his business trailers off of that lot as of yesterday.
Have they?
This is just a, there's a tractor, which that's fine, and a trailer. That you put cars or something on, that's empty. I was trying to fluff that.
Are you seeing the traffic in and out?
I haven't seen anything the last few days.
So did the homeowners association meeting go well with them today?
We didn't, oh, I don't know. Oh, no.
No, it didn't go well.
It didn't go well. It didn't go well.
For them or for them at work?
With regards to that, that was also something that was asked with regards to businesses on lots and those kind of things that was asked. And I was told that probably the strongest first thing would be the homeowners association because that's probably got the most teeth in things in it. The town certainly can be there to be a supporting role in that. But that's probably the most efficient and effective way to look at that issue rather than calling it a nuisance and having just the town do it. It's not to pass the buck on you, but you probably have a little more teeth in your homeowners association.
However, the town will not enforce your homeowners association rules. I just wanted to be clear.
No, we're clear on that. And it clearly says in our homeowners association rules that you can't do that, but there you go. It's enforcing, I'm just like, you guys are enforcing. Same in Porchester, probably, because that's the town.
You're working off, you're on verge of a twenty-five, huh?
Exactly. What about the, what's a public hearing on vacation of road on three thousand sound?
Okay, so on the other side of the freeway, we talked about the highway forty corridor feature alignment for future signal identification. The public hearing that Charleston has advertised is there a vacating that road that's coming up to three thousand sound? And that new big round one that lines it up for the future signal will be the new road. So they're vacating that road. They're doing that. I, I'm just guessing, but I think they're doing that to appease moving that property as part of that parcel to make that pad viable to build on, on both sides of the road. Because it really cuts that road, that little piece will be...
Worthless without.
Well, I don't know worthless, but it will be worth more if the road's not there.
So my understanding, I think there's some order of operations issues that can be discussed, but at the end of the day, we're supposed to get an intersection that's lined up, which is what the town wanted. So I think we're good, we're... Timing issues aside, I think it's one of the processes to getting what we want.
Yeah, well, or there won't be a road over there, they're vacating the road.
Pents will last about two months and then there'll be a new road by your range.
You can make it easy, but you can't stop the traffic.
Any other questions on that? We have the ranch drive repair that the attorneys working on that. The local district.
They're not going.
It's just going. The attorneys are making money. Okay? Anything else on there anybody make questions about? Everybody good? Okay. Yeah. We're working on the heptile now. We have... Okay, this is the application that we received. So I've provided Jeff with a copy of what you have in front of you. With all the documents that the clerk and the mayor have, there's some additional documentation in there that will bring, will bring to the attention of the council, depending on how this application proceeds from here. So if you will turn over your page and the first page in and there's a letter there. What she's doing here is asking that part of the fees be waived. Excuse me, a majority of the fees be waived. Yeah, this, sorry, this is up in there, up in this package. Jeff, do you want to, do you need to talk to this guy? Jeff, do you want to, do you need to talk to this guy?
Only if they have a question.
Okay.
I think it's pretty classified.
Okay. Okay, so that letter you have, everybody read through that? Okay, so you know what they're, what they're, what she's asking for, can I say that? What the applicant is looking for? So, at the back of your packet, there's a letter. Is there a letter at the back of your packet?
There is.
Okay, so what I've done there is I, Jeff, is there one in your? Okay. What I've done there is, because of the way that the code reads, planning can't accept this application because it doesn't include the fees. Okay?
Can I ask Jeff a question?
You may.
So, can you give me some more in depth on why, I mean, the size, inexpensive, why the fees? In this case, you're looking forward to be reduced than anybody else that would have to pay for it?
So, in a normal situation, if somebody was coming to you to change his zoning, they would be looking at it as a change that they would be like, they would like to make. From my mother's standpoint, we're coming to you because a change was made without her approval. And it was benounced to us that the change had been made, there was no formal, uh, written, yeah, notification that this change was going to happen and approval given by the property owner. The county did it unbeknownst to us and therefore we're petitioning the council here today that, that we're saying this was not something we initiated, it was something that was done unbeknownst to us and we're just wanting it to be changed to something that was, that can be backed, back in place to, before that change happened.
And, and that would have been done by the county, and you would be asking the town to waive those fees on something that the county had done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want to make sure I'm at?
Oh, you got some more for it.
And so, we had some, it looks like some deed transfers.
Okay, just a minute, I'll get into that after you've, if you've got that done. I'm just going to really quickly read this, because I, I didn't realize you all didn't have the letter, so. I'll just quickly read that, so these members of the planning commission will have that. Greetings, I have received your application for a zone change on your property, parcel number, both parcel numbers respectively. Have reviewed the application and have found it inadequate relating to the complete application status. Daniel Town Code, the definition of a complete application is specific when stated, complete application with fees paid. Your application has a letter attached asking for a majority relief of the application fees in place of paid fees. As such, the planning staff has ascertained the authority to waive the fees, likewise, clearly with the town council, and as such, has requested the council review their motion to initiate the zoning application at this time to have a complete application prior to the processing and spending of resources of the town. Please be advised also that the date of placement of agenda items for the planning commission is the first of the month immediately preceding the commission meeting in that particular month, so we didn't want to make, because I know there was a timeframe here and I wanted to make sure that they knew that that was. We look forward to working with you as you go through the process of the zone change on your properties and wish you all the best in regards to that end. And so that was a letter I sent out, because really, our staff, my hands are tied to planning, until it's a complete application, I can't put it on the unit, we're going forward.
What would our actual cost be if we were to approve that? Approve to reduce, what would our actual cost be?
Well, we haven't done anything yet and we're already at $90. So the application hasn't even been submitted yet, we've already incurred $90 worth of fees to this point.
What would you, English, sort of say?
Well, that's not on my tab, that's, that's only a T D.
I know, but it's, the cost the town has incurred is the $90 and then you wrote a letter, so.
I'm cheap.
Or $90, $91?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so. So as I, as, as I did a little bit of research, probably more than I should do on, on, because, and then I take this as a learning opportunity for the council, as these applications come before us, we probably need to slow down, we need to, we need to go through the applications. Instead of just motioning to get, to move that application through, we probably need to do a little bit more homework before we head down this road. We've headed down that road, I understand we're on that road, this is just a learning opportunity for the future, okay? So, if, in your packet, you will see that there is a map of the Welsh property. And then you will see one here with an outline. Okay, so this is the map you're all looking at. Pay attention to the bottom of that map. In January of 1997, this property was zone G1. The G1 requirements at that time, this is 97, is 160 acres of ag land with 320 foot of frontage for a residential to be built on that. So that, that was the requirement at 1979. The county did a countywide.
97?
97.
97. The county did a countywide rezone in 2002. So all the zoning, there is no more grazing zone in the county. That was all taken out and it's changed to preservation or some other zone. But it went completely countywide at that point. Nobody in the county received individual notice, because it was such a big scale. Instead, they did the notice in the papers, and I think you'll remember Sister Wagstaff in one of the meetings in Eber City didn't want to be brown.
That's right.
That's, that was part of that whole thing.
That was a county meeting, that was a huge one.
It was a big meeting, and, and Julie was very upset that she would be brown in this new zone map, and so that was when that took place. And so, as far as individual, they absolutely didn't get, they didn't get noticed. Because it was a blanket over the whole entire county in the 2002 zone change. Okay? Any questions on that so far?
To clarify, so there's multiple people throughout the county that didn't get noticed on all sorts of the changes that were made.
Correct, individual notice.
Individuals.
Right. I'm not, I'm not questioning the validity of the public notice that was issued in the paper, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. As a side note, you have 30 days after a zone change to appeal that decision, or you're not allowed to appeal that decision after 30 days by state law. Okay? It's, that's just a second. Okay, and so, as you move through your packet, you will see two record, record documents. And so those were recorded, one will say 2004. That was when the second lot was created. And then in 2005, that lot was titled over to Sheetary, I think is what that says on that document. You guys have that document? Is that right? You see that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what is at the recorder's office at, at the county.
So help, can you just say that again, Eric, maybe?
Sure.
In 2004, what happened?
In 2004, that's the first, this document here, the 2004, this is when this was recorded. So until then, in 97, the last time we have that, a copy of that, that was one parcel.